All right, would you join me for the platoon allegiance?
A platoon allegiance to the United States of America, Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, there are.
Okay, Lisa?
Yes.
What have you got for us?
So, I would like to amend the agenda to reflect numerous transfers and nominations.
Is this the consent agenda?
This is to the consent agenda. Is this something that I should be naming now or should I wait till we get to the consent agenda?
No, why don't you go ahead and make those changes?
I would like to add the transfer of Courtney Cadlec to preschool teacher RMS. The transfer of Caitlin Shadick to special education teacher at, hang on. She's going from JRMS to JGS. Transfer of Erica Jordan from JGS teacher to JRMS teacher. Transfer of James Sullivan from ILC at JRMS to Learning Center IDEA at JRMS. I'd like to add in the nomination of Raymond Boucher, is that correct? Okay, as a Conan High School Earth and Space Science teacher. I'd like to add the nomination of Felicia Schuman to ILC Case Manager Teacher.
Lisa, I think Felicia's already on the agenda.
Oh, thank you. Yep, okay, going through ones that aren't. There's a mixture here. Great, thank you for showing me that, appreciate that. Having numerous documents at the same time. Okay, nomination of Leonard Schwartz as, this is a complicated one, to become the CHS JRMS Social Studies slash ELA teacher, is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
I think it's just CHS.
Just CHS.
CHS, okay. All right, and who am I missing here? I'm getting there. I think that's it. I think I got everybody. Thank you.
That next panel?
And then I would like to remove the meeting minutes from May 2nd.
Okay.
Public and non-public.
Okay. Very good. So, we have a motion. We need a second on that. Second. And all in favor? And Ruben, just to help me out, do we normally do a motion and second on the changes to the agenda? Is that?
Well, we can just pull out the minutes beforehand and then make a motion there, but it's perfectly fine.
Okay.
You can almost never go wrong making a motion and going through the whole process.
There we go. Good. Okay, very good. So, now it's time for public comments.
All right, this is Nicholas Handy, School Board Secretary and Communications Coordinator. On your screen, you should see the public comment policy. Just make sure you familiarize yourself with that before making a public comment. Once you've read that, feel free to chime in if you wish. You can use the hand raise feature at the bottom of your screen so that we can acknowledge you and just use your first name, last name, and town of residence before making a comment, please. All right, I'm not seeing anything at this time. We do have a second public comment section at the tail end of the meeting.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Nick. All right, then we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Hey, so the superintendent's report for today is going to focus on some events. One, an event that's happening this week at this site right here, the JRMS and CHS accreditation. And so the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, NIASK for short, you may have heard of that before. I was going to visit a team. And teams are usually comprised of educators from a variety of schools around in the New England area, Massachusetts, Vermont, some from New Hampshire. Will come and do a study. A little bit of a investigation, I guess you could say, from this standpoint of trying to collect data. And so tomorrow, they spend almost the entire day meeting with a variety of groups. I'm one of those, in one of those groups around 11 o'clock. And they'll have some questions. They're looking at specific indicators or standards that they have and to collect evidence on that. So they'll talk to teachers, they'll talk to parents, they'll talk to other administrators and certain central office as well. So, they'll do that. They'll spend some time the next couple of days gathering some more information, but then spending a lot of time writing. Because at the end of their time, they come back and present their findings, their preliminary report basically, and we'll hand that. So that will be in the hands of the administration here by that Thursday. And so this is, basically, they'll read over also something called a self-study. And the self-study is what this, this population, this group has put together all year long. And they've really done a self-evaluation based upon the standards, based upon the criteria of where they are, whether it be really at the very beginning, are they developing, are they institutionalized, are they progressing further and innovating and so forth? And so, I think that they've done a really nice job having viewed a lot of it, not all, but a lot of it. And they have, they'll have some work to do. They have some goals that they want to put forward as a result of some of the work that they've done and some of the kind of holes, I think, that need to be filled. I will say that, you know, the work that this board has done for the last, since 2017, 2018 timeframe really helped make this process a lot smoother with the visioning that was, that happened. Because the NIASK accreditation process has completely changed from what it used to be to align with our current way of thinking. And I say our current way of thinking about the future. So, the other interesting thing that you should know about the accreditation is that the middle school has never been accredited. And because you have one principal or one administration over its entire school, they're going to accreditate the entire building, so the six through 12. And so, and it's only been, it's only been the high school in the past. So I think it's good. And what you get out of that is that the entire, the entire or half of the organization, if you think, if you think of the district as an organization, is being vetted by an outside, it's an outside audit is what it is. And then in order to keep your accreditation or to go forward with your accreditation, you have benchmarks that you have to hit, goals that you have to hit at certain timeframes and reports that you have to provide. So there's an accountability element to it. It's very good. Jeffrey Grade School and the middle school, high school had some performances in the last couple of days or, or school days. And that last Thursday, Jeffrey Grade School had the book fair bonanza, and that was put on by the JGS parent group. And my understanding is that it drew over 100 individuals there. I think it may be more. I was trying to be on the conservative side of things. And so, in addition to the book fair, individuals participated in outdoor games. There was, you know, kids were playing on the playground, but also they were able to observe a band and chorus concert there too, inside. And then the middle school, high school performance had a, I think it was a one-night event that was on Friday in the Pratt Auditorium, and they put on a one-act Brothers Grimm. And I think I got this right, Nick, Spectacularthon. I want to make sure I spelled that right, because it's not a real word, by the way. But it's a, basically, this was a combination of various Grimm fairy tales, and it was done, one of the learners was overheard saying that this is one of the best performances that she's seen. So I thought that was really neat. I heard that there was, it was tasteful, and I was not able to observe myself, but it was funny. So that's cool. Then the end-of-year event, last time we met, you gave me the authority to kind of handle the end of the year, or maybe it was two times ago that we had met. And so, again, we have already decided that June 16th was the last day for our learners. June 17th is not the last day for teachers, but it kind of is. It all depends. So what we've done is we've turned the 17th into a professional development day. So there will be professional development. It might be on the learning management system. It might be on some curriculum areas. It might be on responsive classroom over in the elementary school. It could be that teams are going to be meeting with one another during that timeframe that has yet to be developed. But in its entirety, although I do have Otis, the learning manager coming on that day. And then there's another encumbered, unencumbered day, but what we did was that we would make that a floating, unencumbered day, since it's really for cleaning up your classrooms, getting out the end-of-year tasks and so forth. That, that can happen at various times. All I've asked is that it will be done prior to July 1. It could be done before June 17th, and June 17th could be a person's last day. So you're putting the power inside of the hands of the educators who know their schedules and know what's going to work for them. So while us getting another professional development day, that is going to be beneficial for everyone in this district and for us to kickstart our work next year. And that's my report.
Great. Are there any questions for Ruben? Yes, Chris?
I have a question. Do we get to see the self-study and/or the accreditation report?
Okay. I think the self-study, if it hasn't been, it's, I believe, supposed to be provided the link to the Education Committee. Did that come to you yet?
We haven't got that yet.
Okay. But yeah, you'll see all that information.
Awesome, thank you.
It's a pretty hefty document.
It's, yeah, it's a, what a few pages with many links embedded.
A former teacher who I'm married to participated in several NIASK studies. It's quite an interesting process, so I'll be looking forward to seeing that report also. I'm sure it's long.
Beautying.
Okay. Great, well, thank you, Ruben. And next we have the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
The consent agenda doesn't have the minutes in it.
Correct. Is it both non-public and public or?
That is correct.
Both were taken out.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended.
Okay.
I second the motion.
Great. Thank you, Christine. Thank you, Daisy. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Okay, over 7:00. Great, and now we want to consider the minutes. So, do we have a motion to consider the minutes for May 2nd?
Make a motion to consider the minutes from public and non-public on May 2nd?
Great, thank you, Daisy. And we have a second.
I say a minute.
Okay, thank you, Paul. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Okay, so the motion passes 5:22 with Christine and Lisa abstain.
0:02, isn't it?
Yeah, what did I say? 5:00. It's okay, Nick doesn't pay attention. I just wanted to know who the extra board members were. Yeah.
Who did you hear?
All right. Okay, very good. So, next on our agenda is the Franklin Pierce University, Jeffrey Ridge Public School District partnership. And so, Ruben, we have you back again. Thank you.
Excellent. All right, so over the past, really, two years, we've been working on developing a partnership with the, with Franklin Pierce University. And so, when I say developing a partnership, there, there has been a partnership already. There's a base to that it has existed with Franklin Pierce and this school district. For instance, they use our track. We've gone over there. We've had times where we've had professional development, or we have had graduation quest, that's right, we've had the time when the Quest Program was there for, so it was like 10 years.
Right.
But that was taking place, oh, nine, nine years that that took place at that location. And so we've had some partnerships, which is good. It makes it easier to go over there and have, start some conversation with a variety of individuals. But we actually haven't had, interestingly enough, as a school district, we really haven't had a formal partnership with their education program, their education department. And so, they've had, you know, in the years, last three years or so, they've had some turnover in their department. And we've been fortunate over the last year and a half, two years, to really have a consistent time of conversation with the people who are currently leading the department and also the dean who supports that department over there. It's been very helpful. And so going into this, we had some goals. And some of these goals not only are for this particular partnership that I'm going to share, but we're also going to take another step into another kind of connected partnership. So in the end, we're going to have a couple different memorandum of understandings. Maybe someday they'll be together, but we're just trying to do things as they, as they arise. And so, right now, we're at a spot where, last week, we are pretty much, we've pretty much finalized our first memorandum of agreement that will need to be brought here. But you, the board chair would need to sign off on it. It's pretty general. It's just saying, this is what the school will do. This is what the, well, the other school, FPU, will do. And some of that is laid out here in some of these bullet points that you're going to see. But we started off with some goals, and one was to just provide increased leadership opportunities for our teachers. We know that when there's collaborative leadership, we know when there are teacher leaders that are in the organization and that decision-making is happening that way on a more regular basis, especially if it's done in a collaborative teacher approach, then schools do better. There's a better sense of collective efficacy. There's better risk-taking, and that also translates to the, to the learners as well. We want to provide increased support for the district's work in personalizing instruction, so that's necessary. So, yeah, that happens through improving leadership in all areas, but it's, this is more, that goal is really specific to getting more caring, trained bodies into the organization to help, whether it be provide planning time, extra planning time for teachers that didn't have that, that can work together to, to improve what they're going to be doing, or whether they're co-teaching in the classroom, or whether they're working with individuals with some needs because they're behind on some subject matters. So that's, that's kind of the idea of number two. Number three, support current and future teachers in the continuous improvement of their craft. So, we do have, as a institution, we have a very specific care or interest in the individuals coming up into the profession. We would argue, I would argue that we also have a responsibility toward that, but certainly we have an interest. And then we also have an interest for our current teachers as well, and that we believe that we can help both at the exact same time. That this is job embedded professional development, if crafted properly, to work with aspiring teachers as well as them working with us. And then, ultimately, to recruit and maintain highly effective teachers. So we know that that, we have annually a fair number of individuals who choose to go another direction or in, maybe another school, could be a nearby school, could be far away, people move. There's a lot of reasons why there's turnover. But the turnover that, what we want to be doing is making sure that the turnover that we have is not because we're not offering the environment that people want to be at. And so we want to offer that environment, we want to create that environment. We believe that this partnership helps to make us a better organization for both the current individuals and anyone that we're going to be recruiting in as well. And for the community at large, because if we can do well together, we also have a better reputation together. And you have a better reputation together, that impacts your community, and it impacts your potentially, the financial aspects of the community as well. Excuse me. So if we go to the next slide, our participation, basically, there are, the idea would be, we'd be supporting them, the college, by providing mentor teachers for field experience, for cooperating professionals, which would be for student teachers. And starting when people are, the FPU students are in their first semester. So potentially, the idea is that we would be their first go-to. They'd come to us, say, this is what we have. And can you take these individuals, you have individuals who would like to mentor our teachers and then, or our future teachers? And then, this is mostly in the elementary, but it's also in the middle high as well, as I added that into this slideshow more recently, because we have another layer to this. But the idea is that we have a school in Ridge. We have a school in Jeffrey. And by having those two elementary schools, which we have quite a few teachers at each grade level with the two of them, that we can provide a very diverse set of experiences to the FPU, for the FPU student teachers and the methods teachers. It is, that's a requirement. They need to have that diversity. And we have economic diversity as well as the ability to give them diversity with grade levels. And so, that would happen. We actually, as a result, are in Jeffrey Grade School in the fall, because they had enough teachers who had wanted the numbers of individuals that they had to offer. They took them all. And so, they're going to hold a class twice a week there. The professor from FPU is going to go to JGS. They'll get transportation there. The class will be held in JGS, so like a room, you know, like a classroom that we would provide. So we would provide space. That would be a memorandum of understanding that they would come to us. We provide them with space and the necessary technology to utilize and so forth. And then they would go and go directly to their assignments. So they wouldn't be going back and forth, driving all over the place. It would all happen in this timeframe. And so, that's happening. And then at the middle high school, there will be a similar class offered here. Fewer students than our elementary educators, but no, maybe by half. And so that course is going to be offered here. And so we're taking a more organic approach to change than a mechanical approach. And the difference between that is that if we were taking a mechanical approach, we might say, this semester, I want this course taught here. This semester, we want this course taught here. And this, and this, and we might even have it all planned out for three years. I've been a part of that process before in another location. We felt that for the sustainability of this program, we would do it as people were comfortable and as the partnership strengthened naturally. And so as it strengthens naturally, it will evolve naturally. So we have language in our MOA that will say that we'll continue to look at this annually, but we're also going to be doing it quarterly with a group of people who are intrinsic to our organizations, both our organizations or committee, that is going to continuously assess how we're doing. Because we want to have these FPU students in our schools, and if they're here as sophomores, we want them here as juniors, and we want them here as seniors. We want that entire relationship to be here and for them to know our learners, our teachers, and to be part of our culture here. And so if that can happen, that would be what I would call success. But we also want to let our teachers know that we value this partnership and that we're, that the SAU is partnering with them in this partnership, not just putting together programs and working behind the scenes to get all this done, but we know that for every method student that a teacher has for observation, and they do a few other items, they get $25 from the college. We're going to be able to, we're going to match that. It's not a lot of money. And in the whole scheme of things, it's not a lot of money for the district, as it turns out. But what it does do is it shows our commitment that we're willing to do that per individual that they have as a methods. And then for our cooperating teachers, FPU actually does a better job than some with providing a $325 stipend to a teacher for student teaching. There are places that, that don't give as much as that. But we have here already an embedded practice in our district of providing $500 for individuals who are mentors of individuals. And so we would supplement that with another 175 to come to that spot and have these individuals. And so it's a further incentivize, it's, it's a little bit of an incentive to have student teachers, a little bit more of an incentive to want to have observers and people working and helping in small groups and so forth a couple times a week. But I think more so, it just shows we're committed to this. And it's economically a good order if we can continue to have these people on a regular basis. If you think about it, two, three years down the road, we might have sophomores, juniors, and seniors in our building. So you could have maybe 20, 30 extra bodies at a given time, sometimes, working with your, your students with our learners, and that would be fantastic. So, if we go up to the next one, I think I've actually already discussed this slide, so that's good. But basically, this is just gives you a little bit of an idea that if you're doing observations, there's classes that have 30 hours of observations, 15 hours. We're changing the way the word observation is defined, however. I don't have it included in this, but all the teachers now, actually in the district, have been, have received a flyer that talks about what's called active observation. So allowing the sophomore, junior level college students to actively be involved with taking maybe us up an individual or a couple of individuals to work on projects or learning activities with them, rather than just standing in the back of a classroom or sitting in the back of a classroom. And I have a visual for you in a few minutes to see what that would look like. We go to the next one. Approximate number of placements, you can see elementary on the, well, mostly the elementary on the left in the fall, yes, elementary. So, still fall, fall on the left and spring on the right. We switched this up. So you can see that there are elementary and middle school classrooms and some high school classrooms as well that, if you look at, like, for instance, they have three social study, five through 12 classrooms, that are going to be looking for people to observe and so forth. And then student teaching, in the fall, we have about five. I think we have all five student teachers. We're still looking for one, I think, special placement, but apart from that, we have all of these individuals that they have to put out there. They're all coming to our district. And so, and I think that that will take place in a similar fashion in spring. The idea of that spring was perhaps, it doesn't have to be this way, but perhaps what would end up having is a class might be offered at RMS instead of JGS then, and all the learners would flip over to that side. And so they're getting both. That's the idea. So, the, if we go to the, skip the next slide, but go to the last one, we'll come back to that, that second to last slide to just kind of finish it all off, is that we, our next steps are to agree and to, and sign the memorandum of agreement. Where June 1st was our deadline. We're on track for that for this partnership that I've just described right here. Simultaneously, we've been working on a partnership for graduate-level interns. And these graduate-level interns might be education interns, or they might be people who are individuals who are in the health sciences, possibly business as well. It depends, but basically, it would be us providing them with jobs or internship opportunities. Now, we could, we're going to develop a concept that we would have to come and bring by. You know, make sure that you guys were fine with moving forward with, we're working on a concept right now for just a general, like, intern for, for education, so full-time interns. You know, us giving them kind of a stipend per month, maybe helping out with their housing. FPU has a way of working with us on that housing aspect of them while they're getting their masters there. They get a percentage off their education and so forth, but they're here working with our kids and education and so forth, but they're here working with our kids and they're certified already, so they're able to do a lot more. And so, basically, you get almost, you know, probably three-quarter time teachers in your building for a better financially, a better price for us, but also it's good for them, so there's a benefit all the way around. Other types of you know, interns, we might have some interest around co-curricular, extracurricular interns, people who are in the health sciences who might what's that, it's not sports medicine, it's like if you're a trainer, athletic trainers, things like that, that might be a better way. Maybe we don't wanna, we have in our budget to go after hiring an athletic trainer, what if we had three interns instead? You know, and then we could also spread that other money in other places. So it's a way to provide us with a lot more service, the concept is that way, or to give us the potential of that happening while economically staying flat or improving our economic status. So that's the idea of these partnerships, and certainly it benefits the college as well, because if people have jobs and they could have jobs as also instructional associates or, or, you know, other, other things of that nature. But if they have them, and they know that that's stable, and they have housing and everything like that, they're more likely to finish their degree program off over there as well. So, the last thing I'd like to do is just, if you'd like to start that, this is something that Nick put together in conjunction with a couple of teachers, this was shown to the elementary educators the other, about a month ago, when we started talking more about, you know, kind of recruitment, I guess you could say, for more teachers to be involved. Because I say this has been kind of the second year, we had individuals last year volunteer to take part of this. And this is what they had to say.
I guess just one note while I'm putting this up. Well, I don't think he's actually featured in the video, the opening card photo is Leonard Schwartz, who was just hired today. So, I'm gonna try and see if this pulls through both in here and via.
I would recommend student teaching to my colleagues, because it's nice to get somebody else.
Apologies, just, you guys aren't hearing it super well, because it's coming from there, correct? Let's try this one more time.
In the classroom, somebody that you're working with. I would recommend student teaching to my colleagues, because it's nice to get somebody else in the classroom, somebody that you're working with in, for a common goal. It's, it helps me review my curriculum, helps me review my classroom management practices. And what I said before, it's, I feel like I'm giving back to the profession, and this profession has given me a lot in life. I needed mentors. And now that I'm at a point like twelve or thirteen, fourteen years in teaching, I can hopefully give that back to younger teachers. And that's really rewarding, especially when you see somebody come into your classroom that hasn't really taught and you're able to take their style, add a little structure, and then you see them growing into a teacher right in front of your eyes.
I do like to have observing students come in, because I like them to recognize how important developing relationships with students is. And by being able to observe that, that is their bigger intention, is to come in, observe. And then slowly get more comfortable with working with students, supporting students, supporting me as they would like, without the pressure of having a whole bunch of expectations. So they quickly warm up to the students, and they're very comfortable to take over sooner than I expect usually. I also enjoy watching those students work with my students. I'm able to watch my students a little bit while the Franklin Pierce students are working with my students. And I'm able to hear sometimes things that I'm a little bit too busy to hear when I'm trying to meet everybody's needs. But I would, I recommend it, I feel like, like, these students are excited to be here, and they appreciate being here. And it really does lighten my day a little bit, to have them here helping with me and my students as well. So much of education is reflecting. And it really does give me a good chance to reflect on what I'm doing, how well I'm doing it myself, when the kids, when the students ask questions based on things they saw me do in the classroom. So I do feel like it does keep me on my toes a little bit, in a good way, not in an exhausting way. There's no judgment. It's just good instruction when I am teaching people that want to be instructors in the classroom.
I got here, it was end of January, isn't it? And this is a sixteen-week placement, so I'll be here end of January too, and the middle of May is when I, when I end, and so far, it's been a lot of co-teaching.
Yeah, so, you know, started out, I feel like the first week, Cory did a lot of observations and kind of learned about the kids and about my teaching style. And then, he's brought in his own teaching style, and I feel like now we're really partners, and we teach together. There are times he takes over and teaches lessons on his own, where I take a backup role, and there are times when I'm the main lead teacher, and he takes a backup role. We both have, you know, small group responsibilities, and in our class, Cory has really developed great relationships with students, and so one of his important roles, I think, is really that individual work with several of our students who need more support. I will tell you, even just thinking about last year, you know, last year was a difficult year, and I had a student teacher who was with me pretty much the whole year. She now is a full-time employee at at the middle school, and her just support of my students and our students throughout the year was just invaluable. And you're just having, again, having somebody that cares so much about education, want to, wanna learn and wanna work with the students. You know, they're not getting paid for it, this is something that they want to do, and so having them in the classroom to be able to support the students is is just, I can't imagine not wanting to do that. You know, yeah, there's, there's some work associated with it, but it's, the extra work is is minimal compared to what you gain from it, you know, so, I mean, we'll sit and discuss lessons that we don't have a chance with all of our peers and our colleagues to, you know, sit down and talk about everything that we want to do, and what, this student, you're concerned about this student, we can sit and have those discussions throughout the day and change our teaching, depending on how things are going, and it's just really nice to have that co-teaching model.
All right, are there questions about this crazy idea?
I have a question, I, I love it, it's awesome. And it's just a question about like, why was FPU chosen? As opposed to other colleges?
That's a great question. So, the, the best answer, right off, is just that they're right in our backyard. So, like, we are we are, we are there, elementary and middle high school, you know, they are in our community. And so, why wouldn't we want to partner with an organization with our community at a deeper level than perhaps what we've been in the past? The, you know, I, we have some partnerships with Keene State. We do, and a lot of our partnership with them is right now, as an organization, is through their Southwest Center, their Professional Development Center, and so which is tied, yeah, yeah, with, tied with the college. And so, the relationships we have, we, you know, we, we will go through that group and not directly right into the College of Education. So, you know, we, I would say, four years ago, I did have, I did approach Keene State with a similar concept. You know, they've had declining enrollment in that area as really all schools have within education. And they, I, I think we're a bit, I would say that we, while we have a couple, and we, and we're not stopping Keene State students from coming our direction. We, we don't have more than a handful, and that would be a high year. This is a situation where we both have a vested interest, and so we can have a lot more, we can have a lot more energy in our school, schools, and this guarantees that. Keen, Keen has Keen, Keen has Anadok, those are two very close systems to them, and so I would expect that those systems would, would partner with Keene State a little more thoroughly than we would be able to, being really half an hour away.
Yeah, okay.
We would not be stopping our partnerships with, with the others.
Like other, the, the student teachers there could still come.
Yes, we're not, this is not exclusive. Just like, it's not exclusive the other way around, we are just given first opportunity.
Oh, I understand, they can send our students other places, is what you're saying?
So this is just, maybe a comment, I don't know. But as we look for the full-time internship positions, maybe we consider someone an intern for Nick. Because he does a lot, he has a lot on his plate, and he has created this incredible system that I'm sure would students would love to learn.
Just, and they have communication degrees over there.
Thank you, Lisa.
I find it very exciting that in most student-teacher scenarios, the school itself actually has very little say in what's being taught, what's being learned, it's really a very isolated thing between a teacher, maybe a principal, but a teacher and the student and their teacher, like, it's really, it's their little, little body. To have an opportunity for the district to really be integral in how this is manifested. And it's gonna really change how Franklin Pierce has been doing their education department. And it's going to really make it so, higher education can be so much of its own little silo and, and very disconnected from what the real classroom looks like. This is really giving an opportunity for the district to have, you know, to, to a broader body, being able to have a real holistic teaching experience for these students, and, and, you know, talk about helping the teachers feel the value of their community, and, and, you know, this is all rent, I mean, it's very exciting. I do have a question, will these students be required to take a praxis before they come? I know many higher education programs, by the time they get to sophomore year, require a praxis?
I don't think they take the praxis in their sophomore year, I think that it might be after that. I, I can't remember exactly, I know they have to take it while they're in, it might be before student teaching.
What is a praxis, exactly?
There's several praxis, but the one that you're talking about are the math, the general praxis, math, reading, writing. It's those, those items you have to pass in order to get a certification period. There's also a practice, like a subject area praxis as well. Yeah, but like when I got my math certification, I was like, praxis two, or something like that, it was, I had to take the, the high school math one. So, it's a test.
Okay.
Yeah, you get to pass with a certain result. The cost money, I think was the ETS, used to own it, I don't know who owns it now.
It's, it's under media.
It's some money, and if you don't pass one of the areas, you have to keep on taking that. And it's essential for a statement of eligibility. So if someone doesn't have a statement of eligibility, in part, it could very well be because there's, one of the assessments has not been passed.
I know that at Keen, it's been longstanding, the second year, like, before you getting near the higher stuff, make sure that you can get your praxis, so I didn't know if that was something that that would be.
Well, I knew that they had done that a couple of years, and then I, then I don't know if, maybe they still do, I'm not entirely sure, I thought they did it. They popped it onto one more year. There was some disagreement then, but it is, they've, they've noted, yeah, you gotta, you gotta have that before you go too far.
Anybody else?
Oh, and I wanted to put in an intern request too, for IT. Franklin Pierce has a strong IT program, and especially in network and security. That would be really nice to have people not just working with kids, but helping with our infrastructure, that would be very cool.
So you think this partnership could expand and include the kind of things that Christine and Lisa are talking about?
Well, yeah. No, I think that that's, I mean, obviously, we're starting with the education department. And we want that for our graduate interns as well, but we would be very much interested in looking at other interns, for instance, having for someone for sports to be an athletic trainer. What if you had three athletic trainer, you know, people who could be at different locations, at different games and so forth, that would be fantastic. Obviously, if we can do that, we can make room financially for other interns, and, yeah, be super valuable to the organization, even the business department. In the SAU. Special ed is an obvious area, that would be, that was our kind of first target area of conversation.
All right. Anybody else? Well, I just have one question relating to your second slide. I noticed, you, you said something about provide increased support for the district's work in personalizing instruction for learners, pre-K to twelve. I've been thinking about that, I was talking with a teacher, not one that I'm related to recently, and they were talking about how disconserving it is to try to personalize education when it means sometimes that you have to bring a student forward to learn something that they couldn't pick up in the beginning of the semester. And yet, you're counting on everybody understanding that, so that you could you know, move through your material. And, and, and so, when you get to the end of the semester, you want to be at, you know, a certain point, but if the student hasn't learned the first parts of the lesson, how is that going, and is it easier for the newer teachers, or the teachers who've been through the Leadership Institute? What, what has been your experience with the challenges of personalized instruction?
Yeah, so I think that we're all over the spectrum with what comfort level people have and the capacity they have within the classroom to differentiate in a way that's going to bring people along. I think that what we've done is for instance, this past summer, when I worked with the math group at the middle school, we said, no, you, you need to, you need to have your your grade level pacing, just because you have five individuals who are not understanding, doesn't mean you slow the process down. Because as you build your learning, you build your curriculum, the things that are not learned here get woven in, and so there's multiple opportunities to be showing that you've learned something. You know, there are, there are situations where there has to be some intentional added support in order to make certain that, that that falling behind does not, not occur on a, on a regular basis. There are some individuals who are very much going to learn at a much slower pace, and that's when you get into individualizing education as opposed to personalizing education, there's a, there's a difference between the two. Significantly so, but that, I think, to answer your question about where, where people are, where things are at, that's that is a system question. How do we as a school work together to build the structures and the timeframes and the schedules and the peer review sessions and all that, how, how will we be building that to make sure that there's an automatic place or approach to helping someone who's getting behind? And so I think that as the buildings, as the schools get more collaborative in nature, and they learn to utilize data better and on a more regular basis, that's, that naturally, the solutions take place. Because in general, if the you know, the, the basic, the professional learning community model is, you know, is written by the DeFores anyway. It's simply, you know, what, what needs to be learned? How do you know when they've learned it? If, if they haven't learned it, what are you doing, and if they have already learned it, what are you doing, and so you're constantly looking with, what's the information you're looking at? To make a decision about the next step for each child. Um, and usually it's not just one child, it's usually clusters of children, so you can personalize in groups.
So obviously having another person in the classroom.
It help, it helps to have more individuals, there's no question about it. Um, although individuals who don't have, um, a direction. You know, if they're not given a direction or if they're not given the training necessary to do it, that can be very difficult. Just giving us a student, for instance, a worksheet. And saying, hey, you didn't do, you didn't get this right, let's do some more of these, that doesn't necessarily. And actually probably very rarely result in improved learning. Usually something, some other reason for someone not being able to do a particular process.
Well, thank you for that update, I, it helps me certainly, I think that. It's a really huge part of what we're doing.
It is, yeah, we're, we're just, we're building a system, everything about this right here is about sustainability of this. And everything that we're trying to move, do, move forward is, is about sustainability of our. Of our improvement efforts. And as long as we work collaboratively in tandem with others and build strong relationships and partnerships, same concept with this. Um, and hopefully other. Partnerships that we need to develop in the community, especially as we're talking about wanting. Uh, our own students here to be, have internships or. Uh, other outside of school experiences, we're going to need to do a whole lot more of this work, maybe not quite at the level that we're going to end up doing here. But, but there's other, there's other, once we have a couple of different partnerships with them this way. You know, who knows, maybe the next step is we talk about, uh, college. Credits for our kids here. And, uh, whether it be through Running Start or whether it be through our learners going over there and taking courses on their site. Or something to that effect. You know, we pay X amount of dollars for our. Learners to go over to, uh, Conval for that type, you know, that type of programming, so technical programming and so forth. You know, can we mimic that in another direction as well for other learners? Or can we find a cost sharing, cost savings approach to doing that? June first for this particular MOA. Um, and then after that, as fast as we possibly can, I know that they sent out an email or they were supposed to send an email out to their graduates. Before graduation, because they just had their graduation to talk about opportunities that were at our school district. She's the president. Um, I don't know if I have the president's signature line on that, I have the dean's signature line. The president is aware of this, the president has that video. We shared that video with them and it went to the president's office in less than a day, so it's that whole district, I mean, the whole. School knows of the situation is supportive. Yeah, even with the partnerships we had over in King State, one that tread well was the president over there, when she wouldn't be the one signing. Those usually happens at the dean level.
I'll look up their. Website on education. What they've got in there. Well, uh, thank you. We're gonna have a discussion now on the, uh, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. School board calendar.
This is a draft. That's my presentation.
All right.
Nick put it together, so if there are any mistakes. No, no, he, I think you mimicked, well, actually, why don't you, Nick, talk about, kind of, I think you mimicked. What you've done in the past.
Yeah, I mean, um, obviously we have the, uh, existing every first and third Monday. Um, there are some conflicts just due to holidays, um, those are all noted on the right-hand column. Um, I followed the same pattern of certain things moving earlier later. Um, based on past years, obviously, if the board wants to make changes to those meetings, obviously, uh, that can be done. I think the one change that I made this year. Was just moving, uh, Martin Luther, the board meeting that we normally have for Martin Luther King Day, just moving it back. Um, a week instead of just moving it to that Tuesday, just kind of a more fall in line with the consistency of keeping things on Mondays. And B, just due to some of the timing of, um. Various meetings and things that we have within that month. Um, you know, usually we get pretty close with the budget hearing and the, uh, one of those school board meetings. Um, the, uh. Deliberative session and all those things are based on the RSAs. I know Carrie typically does a budget development calendar and I know that sometimes based on like whether or not we have a bond, some of those things might change, but. Those are set based on RSA and, you know, past practices. Um, trying to think of if there's anything else.
We took the Saturday off.
Well, we, so that was another thing I carried forward was we had moved the Saturday, this past budget session, we took out the budget and we added an additional Monday in. So if you look, it's, uh. You have the fifth, the twelfth. And then the, uh, nineteenth, so you have three Mondays in a row in December. Um, those times mimic the times that we used. Uh, last year with two of them being at six thirty, one of them being moved back to five, obviously, there can be some wiggle room in those times if the board so chooses. Um, and then that would leave the Saturday. Um, session as a snow date for that Monday. Um, or just, I guess, a floating in the event that any of those get canceled due to, uh, weather. Um, as you can see, we're still all at the music room, um, for the board meetings with having the RMS. Um, gymnasium for the deliberative session, um, I haven't had the time to really nail down a good space for. Um, RMS to actually hold meetings, something that has the appropriate amount of space to hold you guys, an audience. All the equipment, obviously, we were meeting at the cafeteria before, there's a lot of audio pickup in that room. That if we start putting this equipment in there, it's going to pick all of it up and it's not going to sound good for a live stream. Um, so hoping to, again, just at some point, try to find a location that would make sense of RMS so that we can go. Potential, well, at least if the board wants that, um, to have that equity and going back and forth as we did before. Um, this, this, uh, music room situation is something we started during COVID, just because this is naturally a really good. Room for sound purposes. Um, and I think that's all I had for notes, and obviously, if you guys have questions or if there's things that you guys want to change, obviously, that can be done.
So I don't know how your, um, range members feel. But from my perspective, uh. I think it was. A good thing to alternate between RMS and, uh. DHS. Terms of holding our meters in two different places. However. If I really look at it realistically. The number of people we get in ranges isn't any more than the number of people we get here in Jaffrey. And. We have excellent capability of zooming it to anybody who wants to watch it at home. So I'm not terribly concerned about the fact that we're. Uh, running our meetings in Conan instead of running them at RMS. If we ever do find a space in RMS that's, you know, uh. The right place to set everything up and have everybody attend, then I'd say, yeah, we could do it there, but, uh. Just personally, I, I feel that it's probably a good choice to stay the way it is. Given that people are already accustomed to it anyway.
And I guess the one location we do have is the RMS gym, because it's where we've been holding, um, the deliberative session, the issue with that is just like. Putting a meeting that we typically don't get a lot of attendance in such a large space, if we wanted to, that would probably be the best location that I've determined so far. Um, but again, it's the question of having like kind of a, it seems to be a good space for the size of meeting, but. If that was a desire, that could be explored in more depth.
And the RMS gym is a better space for a deliberative session. For a potential larger crowd. It has, has more space than the ground.
Zoom in makes it pretty easy.
Yeah, definitely.
It does, you know, we all have all enjoyed complaining about Zoom, or at least I know, but it does help a lot.
It does.
Make a motion to accept the schoolwork calendar.
I second the motion.
Okay, any discussion? Given that this is the first time I've seen it. Okay. I, I will vote, but if I see something wrong with it, I'll come back later. Okay. All right then, there are all those in favor? Oppose? Stand, okay. Uh, and that sounds reasonable, Charlie. So, uh. Next, we have our change of school or assignment, best interests and manifest hardship. Policy. Which we've had a while to look at, had a good discussion on it last time we met. So. Is there anything more we want to say about it or should? Or does someone want to make a motion?
Uh, yeah, I, I think that we should forego a third reading. Um, I think that there's going to be some policies coming up at our next meeting that will take some time and I, my, that's my. Forecasting, um, and I think. This is what the school board, the national, the New Hampshire School Board Association has put together with their lawyers and it's been vetted and. I would recommend that we simply vote on it.
Is that a motion?
I'll move to vote on it, I, 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 I just, I didn't know if that was just something we should discuss. No, let's look at it again. I make a motion that we accept this policy as, as written.
I'll re-sign it. Okay. Very good, all those in favor? Okay, that, that motion carries unanimously. All right, very good, uh. Board committee updates. We'd like to start.
Think quickly, the education committee met. I'm right on the smart goals. It's got, um, future, um, assessments and, I mean, meetings and assessments, yeah, on Tuesday, Wednesday and many meetings in process. Up, upcoming meetings for that, for the smart goals. Yeah.
Yeah, yes. Compensation. And, uh, we reviewed the NEAS standards. And then. After we arrived, we got into smart bowls. That's where we're at, we have the people in. Doing a formative assessment tomorrow on Wednesday, and then we'll have our summative assessment. Uh, in twenty twenty-four.
Perfect, okay. And then we discussed block scheduling and that seemed to be moving forward quickly, we had the first parent. Meeting was done, the second one is coming up somewhere in early June. And then we talked about the scheduling process, this is really good, um, they. Are planning on having. Schedules in the students' hands for next year by June tenth. And they'll have a transition day where all of the kids are moving up, being transitioned to. The next year's day and they'll have their schedule in hand, so they'll literally be going through their next year's schedule on that day. Which was really cool, because, uh, they can. To have them see that and actually go through it calms a lot of nerves for these guys. So that's really good to have a specific date, June tenth. And. I think this one with it, I'm not sure, but June fif, no, I think that was a personal thing, June fifteenth is Monday, I don't know, we talked about that, but. End of your event calendar thing. That was the education committee meeting.
Okay, finance committee meeting is going to be the twentieth. Nick. Set of the, but we rearranged it, so the finance committee is going to meet Friday the twentieth. And that's it. What time, one thirty? Okay, thanks Charlie, what about, uh, policy?
Policies meeting this coming Thursday, four thirty. And our goals is meeting the following Thursday, the twenty-sixth, also at four thirty.
That's Thursday, four thirty, at what time? I mean, what place?
Uh, both of them will be in this SAU office, that conference room. Beside the main office of the SAU.
Policy, if it's a small group, probably meet in my office. Yeah, because you just have a better projecting system.
Facilities is meeting next Monday.
Right. Very good, and, uh, John Leclerc gave us an update that the transformer's been removed and that went very well. Know about that and, uh. Next Monday, we hope to meet with Steve Horton, who's the. Uh, clerk of the works, uh. On the HVAC project. And so we're all hoping to be able to. Put our thinking caps on, ask some good questions about that project and. How's it going and what are the challenges anticipated? So do we have any, find any PCBs when we pull the transformer out? No, the, uh, total amount of hydrocarbons was less than two percent, meaning that we don't have to do anything. Further. And it came in quite a bit under budget.
It didn't have a budget.
Well, you know.
Could have been.
Yeah, we're, we're grateful that it came out the way it did. Yeah, you know, so, so, some of us make budgets as, uh. Events progress, and when that transformer became an issue.
I will say, uh, I talked to John Leclerc today and we're following up to find out. What, what the truth is. Um, I went to RMS. On Friday afternoon and had a meeting there with a couple of individuals in the wing. That has, it's like, since the three hundred wing, it's. Like everyone skips it when they go into that building, it's a. A, a first grade, the second grade, and there's an art room there, and so that was where they had. Displaced individuals to do some of the work, so. One of the teachers in the room that we met indicated that. Her room had been pleasant all day and that. Um, even though it was humid out and, and hot, that the room felt just extremely comfortable. And felt it was the system, the new system that was in there, now, I don't know if the new system was hooked up, but. Uh, apparently she said that they had come in and were putting it, you know, days before, putting in the final units into that area. Um, so that would be good if that's the case.
Take perception.
Yeah, because we would, well, perception, but also if, if those are actually on and working. Uh, it was a pretty hot day that day and, um, it was, it was. Cooler than it is in here right now, so it was, it was comfortable. So hopefully that's the case.
Well, we'll, we'll get our hopes up. Go, goals committee.
Where goals committee is going to meet the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, okay, great, thank you. And, uh, wel- wellness committee.
Wellness meets on Monday.
And, uh, there's a rumor that there's an outside guest possibly. Christie, I think we should disservice this idea.
Um, we are, the wellness committee is going to hear a presentation by Lauren Judd of the Cornucopia Project in. Peterborough. Cornucopia Project does, if you don't know, is a nonprofit that does. Educational gardening programs, um, primarily historically at. Conval, but has recently leapfrogged over to Keen. And they are interested in expanding this. Menu of projects that they have, programs that they have to our school district. Um, and they are willing to do so much to make this happen, including write a gigantic USDA grant. Um, that would fund the program. So she's going to give us a presentation on it. We'll let you know how it goes, I have high hopes. Well, wellness committee meets at three thirty on three fifteen on Monday. For instance, one of the little programs that they do is a snack club. And this is a short window program, uh, club, maybe. Six weeks and someone from the Cornucopia Project will buy local food. Produce, meat, dairy and bring it to the school. Where the kids have signed up for the club and teach the kids about nutrition. and teach the kids about nutrition and how to prepare the snack. So that's, they're getting two things there. And if there's a school garden at the school, they'll also harvest from the school garden. So they're learning about nutrition, they're learning how to do basic food prep. And then, of course, they get to enjoy each other's company while they that's just a little tiny project that they do, that would be easy to implement.
And there is a statewide farm to school effort. And so we'd like to get involved in that, too. This is the Wellness Committee talk. And who knows, maybe even agriculture ELOs. Like to talk to Tadina about that. It's not been a part of our system yet, but
Certainly add Cornucopia because they do that now for Conval.
Right. And then I think Christine had a great idea about getting an intern to help Nick, who seems like he does everything. And among the other things that we're trying to get him to add to his already full list is Communications Committee.
Yes, I'm going to be sending out an invite tomorrow. I was going to do it today and I got bogged down. Was going to do it, as said earlier, but had a couple of personal things come up. I really want to get a meeting sometime between now and beginning of June because then I'll be busy with potentially a lot of graduation related stuff. So members who are on the board anticipate something tomorrow, just for gauging when we might be able to meet.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And I guess we're ready for public comments, too.
All right, so the policy is back up on the screen for everybody to see. Those are who are still left over. If you'd like to make a public comment, you can do so by pushing the hand raised button at the bottom of your screen. Again, just make sure you're familiar with the policy before making a comment. First name, last name, and town of residence before you speak, please. All right, I'm not seeing anything.
Okay, well, it's a quiet night, so people are not needing to comment. And I think that's, that's good. And then we have Board Matters. So are there any Board Matters?
I, I have two and I'm sorry, but they'll be quick. The first one is for the new board members to think about graduation season and the demand that that will put on your schedule as a board member. We, we all attend the graduations, as many of them as we can, just to make that aware. That kind of threw me for a loop last year.
And you have to dress up for some of these graduations.
Yeah.
To actually perform.
Yes.
Wait, what do you mean? Like so? Oh, senior miss, I thought you said many graduations.
Well, there's fifth grade recognition night.
Yep.
Eighth grade.
Step one. Fifth grade recognition night usually occurs on the same evening. So one is in range, one is a little bit half an hour to 45 minutes sooner than the one from Jeffrey typically. I don't have the exact schedule yet, but some of us go to both and present at both. But board members typically choose one or the other one and doesn't mean that all of you have to attend, but someone usually attends.
And we present?
Only if you're asked to, yeah.
Usually we show up and smile.
Yeah, there's the
For a parent and we go anyways?
You're all good. You get, you get your, you might get better seating. Yeah, you can't, you won't sit with your family. So now, it could be a good thing. There's some benefits to then also the eighth grade one and then the seniors, obviously.
And then sometimes some members go to awards night for seniors nights and yeah.
Yeah, there's a baccalaureate, which is
A lot of things coming up. As soon as we have a schedule, people. Just wanted to make you aware.
We don't know any of these dates, right?
Graduation.
Well, right, but
I believe the, I believe that we're thinking of the 15th of June being fifth grade. But I could be off on that one.
I'm waiting on
There's going to be something. I, I, I think it's 15th and then I think the 16th is usually eighth grade. And then I think we've already had the high school one. Oh, you have probably a lot of information.
Um, the only one I'm waiting on is RMS. I can send the board. Well, actually, I'm waiting on the JRMS stuff as well, but I'm anticipating a calendar of whatever events for JRMS sometime this week. We'll post the middle and the high school stuff as social media posts that'll go on the website. I can email that to the board. I do have a date for JGS. I haven't been told anything about RMS at this time, so I can just try to collect what I have and send it to the board shortly. I know that sometimes you guys also get personalized invitations for some events. So you might get something in the mail at some point, too, but
What was it?
What night is the actual high school graduation?
It's the 10th.
10, that's what I thought, but it wasn't positive. Okay. And I, is there a prom happening?
It already did happen.
It did happen. Great. Okay. So I'm trying to keep up with, because we're going to be out for a while. DI is going to Missouri, which groups, how many groups are going? Do we know? Are there two groups going to Destination Imagination in Missouri this weekend? It's this weekend. Congratulations to the groups. I know that there's
I thought it was one, but maybe there were two. I put one for certain.
Congratulations. Good luck. Safe travels.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for mentioning it. And so what, do we know when they leave and when they return?
I think it's the 21st is the beginning of it, 21st to 24th or something. So I'm assuming they're leaving Friday. I don't know for sure.
Very good. Very good. You know, prior to the pandemic, we did have a kind of a more regular update on things that were coming up for the school. Certainly whenever there was a play. I noticed, you know, tonight, these spectacular thought. That would be normally something that we would at least know about. And then somebody would show up if they could or if they wanted to.
Yeah, I'm seeing that this says that there's four days till a concert. Is that?
I don't know about this one, but there's also, I know that the, there's something going on during our, I think it's our next meeting, policy one. Because it's like a ukulele plus something else is going on on that Thursday because my son said he's playing. I don't know what it is.
Nice.
I was going to show up, but then I got a meet. I don't know.
Yeah.
All right. I don't know what it is. I don't even know who to contact us, to be honest with you.
Let's, yeah, let me just take a quick look at the
So I, I think one of the things we want to do is get tied into these kind of events. So at least we know what's going on. And then, you know, some things we can participate in, other things we can't, but have the opportunity. So we
And I think the full band is playing for the parade coming up for Memorial Day. Usually the band plays for the parade for Memorial Day.
Does the band play for the, for the Memorial Day parade? Oh, interesting. I didn't even know that. I should have. I know interact gives out the flags.
Interact is what?
They give out the flags.
Yeah.
They usually are on the street and they've got a couple of hundreds of these little, you know, flags and they give them out to everybody.
And is there no Shakespeare Festival anymore? Is that COVID killed?
Yeah, I don't know if they do it anymore. I know last year, because my kids did it when they were in the grade school, but I don't, I haven't heard anything.
I don't think it's happening this year, but it did get stopped for a couple of years there due to COVID. Yeah, but I don't necessarily think it's gone for good.
So I mean, it's one of the things we can do is kind of at least be aware and, you know, maybe with some things we might want to encourage them to start up again, other things we might not, but at least if we're aware.
I was so happy to hear about the talent shows coming back. What a wonderful tradition. I've only been to the Jeffrey Grade School one, been there many times, squeezed into that little gym. But absolutely loved, loved it. And I'm thrilled that it's coming back and I'm looking at the calendar and I see it's coming back to this building, too. So it's fantastic.
Oh, yeah. Wait, is that night?
The live district.
I think it's on the 16th.
There's all sorts of
It says June 2nd.
JRMS Talent Show, 6:30.
Important links.
Yeah, I can do this up on the so so while I put it up, one thing that we've been trying to work on, and it's not quite at the level that it needs to be at, but with the new website that we put in place this year for the district, you get upcoming events throughout the district. But if you go to an individual school, you can get things that pertain specifically just to that school level. So they might look a little bit different. So you'll get the, the three most current events there. But then also, if you go to important links, calendars, annual calendars, we have all of our static calendars, which include school board, general calendar, budget fulfillment, and so on. But if you go to the live district calendar, you get this right here. Everything's color coded to school. Unfortunately, like I said, we're still working with schools at all levels to try to get everybody up to a higher level of utilizing this calendar so that it can be more of a one stop spot for people to be like, okay, here are all the events that are happening. I'd say that the middle school, high school is doing the best with it right now. And they've got a pretty good setup. Not everything's always on there, but they're doing a lot in the elementary schools. We have some new folks that have come in in those positions. We're trying to get them to also input this information. You also have the ability to subscribe to email alerts and things like that. Add it into your own online calendar so that you can actually just have it moved in. So this eventually, hopefully within the next year or so, will be like the ultimate kind of calendar resource for the district. It's just making sure that people stand on top of posting.
So that bottom one on the second, that says the talent show at six to nine at night.
Yeah, and it, if you go to the flyer that's attached to it, it confirms that.
Oh.
So and this is something that the middle high school specifically has been doing. If they have anything that's relevant to the event, they'll attach a PDF, you know, posters, information, just so that people know more. So we're, we're not only trying to put things on the calendar, but put more comprehensive information so that you know more details.
Could you move to the June one?
Move to the June month.
Where you just were, but you were looking at May. Can you go to the June one? This is so helpful, Nick.
So yeah, you'll see
Spend no time on this.
Senior week events, you have your graduation practice, you have your awards night. You have your graduation at the track, but you click into here, gives you more information. You go back to the calendar and you just click generally on the senior week events and eventually they're going to attach a comprehensive kind of bit in there. So
And what you said was that RMS and JGS are not quite as good as the high school is on.
Yeah, right now the high school's a little bit more consistent in posting things. As you can see, if you look through here, there's a lot of, a lot of orange.
Yeah.
So orange is going to be the color code for the middle high school. Red's going to be for RMS. Blue is going to be for JGS. We have all the school board meetings on there, early release days. So what was that?
Put the activities in?
So it, it's these individual, these are actually individual Google calendars that just automatically update. So I control the overall district one and then the individual school offices control their own calendars.
Okay.
Just because it's easier for them to be in to know about what's going on and to post these things than me having to, you know, ask and update and change it around. So it's hopefully this summer, we'll be able to, or, you know, before people transition out, we'll be able to just kind of reinforce this concept. Now that we have some stability at the elementary schools and the front offices.
Yeah, yeah.
To, this is, this is really valuable on many levels for us as a school board. I would like to have a recommendation that when we start the school year, that this become part of our regular board meetings, maybe during Board Matters, to just view the current, you know, if maybe that would encourage the schools to say, oh, we're, make sure you put the concert on there. We're advertising to everybody, this is what's happening. But it's really like, we should be ending our day celebrating what we're doing. That this is really valuable for us, you know, to, to see these activities and the interaction in the community, the, look at all the parent things, just on this little thing, you know, this is really valuable for us. I would like to make this a regular
Quick and easy to find, too.
Yeah, just a regular public time of, here's what's happening. Is that? I don't, I
I, I think we should base that on what time we get to this last agenda item. If it's after 9:30, then
You got, you have homework, right?
Fine, based on time.
No, I think it's a great idea that we should touch on this. Yep.
And one additional point, we've been promoting a little bit throughout the year, but we can continue to promote it more. Anybody who has the app on your phone, you have the ability to select, you know, if you're a parent and you're only at JGS, you can customize that calendar. So only the district and the JGS events are going to come out. So you don't have to weed through, you know, RMS and other stuff like that. And it allows you to change as you go through. So as your kids go up to the middle high school, you can add that. So that's another resource that all the school board members are entitled to would be to download that app and then just have all the events on your phone. You'd go into the app and then you'd be able to click calendar and then just have everything. So if anybody needs help with getting that on their phone, I'm happy to do so. Obviously, you have it.
But I wanted to say a quick little this format.
Is better.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, my God. Like looking at this is like, wait, when is that? What is that? That is such a better picture.
Yeah, sometimes
To like the list.
Shrinking it down into a phone is a little bit more limited. I mean, everybody's going to have their own style of what they like or less, but so I guess just a quick little website resource lesson for everybody.
And I didn't know that you could click on it. Also, like I said, it's the talent show and you can click on it and it gives you the more information.
Right? Yeah, that's great. Okay, excellent. And then I think unless anybody has a future item, you just need a motion.
Motion to a Jake.
A second.